The April meeting of the Town of Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals. Would you please rise for the pledge to the flag? Welcome, everyone, to the meeting of the ZBA. Before we begin, I just want to explain a little bit about the procedure that we use with the board. The meeting is divided into two halves. The first half takes up public hearings for each of the applications and will take them in the order in which they're printed on the agenda. And a copy of the agenda is available in the little black tray next to our council's desk. For each application, we'll ask the applicant to come forward, to state their name for the record, and then be sworn in. All testimony before the ZBA has to be sworn testimony. When that is done, we'll ask the applicant to give just a very brief explanation of what their application is about. We've all read it, so you don't have to go into great detail, but to just kind of refresh our memories as to what it is that you're seeking. Then each of the members of the board will have an opportunity to ask questions about the application. When the board has finished with its question, the floor will be open for anyone from the public that wishes to address that application, but we would insist that you speak only to that application. And also, anyone wishing to comment on an application has to be sworn in first. Once we've asked all the questions and the public hearing will be closed and we'll go on to the next item. When we've completed all of the applications, we'll then begin what's the deliberation phase. During this part of the meeting, there'll be no further input from the public, but you're certainly welcome to stay and listen to our deliberations and to our votes. We have a full panel tonight, but we'd also have an alternate if there's any recousels on any of the items. Okay, item number one. Lauren and Matthew Kors, 25 Claudia Lane. Okay, just have a seat and pull the microphone there. Great, okay, and so just state your name.
Matthew Kors.
Okay. Paul, do you want to swear in?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony provided tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay. Okay, so tell us a little bit about your project.
So, I'm looking to put a shed on the side of my house that's within the 10 feet from the property line.
Christine, any questions?
This is right in back of the fence, right? It's there?
No. No, I actually plan on moving that fence. Do you guys have the drawing in front of you?
Mm-hmm.
So actually, right now, the fence is right here.
Mm-hmm.
I actually plan on moving it back here, building a retaining wall and getting rid of that dirt that's there and bringing it down to the same level as the house and putting the shed there.
Okay, so the...
Like, right now, there's a retaining wall that's in the front of the house. I plan on moving that back with the fence and removing that dirt, bringing it down to ground level, the same level as the house.
Okay, any...
And how high is the shed?
It's roughly about 10 feet.
That's all, thanks.
Okay.
Do you have a picture of the shed?
Yes.
Can you show it?
Do you want me to bring it up?
Sure. Thanks. And will you be using it as a garage or a shed or...
It's going to be a shed. There won't be any vehicles in there.
Your drawing indicates it's about four feet from the side of the building.
Correct.
Is there a need for it to be, to have that space there?
Well, I didn't, I just didn't want it like right on top of the, on top of the house because, you know, for snow and everything, you know, I needed a little gap.
And there are two temporary structures there now?
Yes, correct.
Are they there?
They will be gone.
Okay, and is there a reason why you can't use the rest, the remainder of your backyard?
Because most of it is my leach fields that takes up pretty much the entire backyard.
Okay, what's the...
And my septic tank.
Okay, what's the floor of the, is there a floor in the shed?
Yeah, I'll be pouring a concrete pad.
Okay, all right, that's all I have.
Okay.
Art?
You gonna try to match the house color or not?
Correct. Same siding, yes.
Same siding. Okay, I'm good.
Okay, so on the, as you face the house, the shed's going to be on the right-hand side.
Correct.
And all of the fence is going back.
To be behind the shed.
So there won't be any fence in the, between the shed and your neighbor's property. That fence will be set back.
Correct. That fence will be set back.
Okay.
So those few sections, they'll be, they'll be gone, set back, and then come across to the house.
Okay, okay. Larry?
No questions right now.
Tony?
I have no questions.
Carmen?
Just looking at the picture, is this a garage door?
It is a garage door.
Carmen, can you use your microphone? Thank you.
Pardon me? Go ahead. Oh, okay.
It is a garage door because I will be bringing, like, my lawnmower. I have, I have a few dirt bikes that I'll be bringing in there, but there won't be any cars in there.
No.
Just for easy access in and out.
Right. And then there's another door on the side.
There'll be a side door, yes.
Yeah, as well. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, what are the dimensions of the shed?
12 by 20.
12 by 20.
I just do have, I have one other question.
Yes.
It's going to be behind the front line of the house, is that correct?
It's going to be even with the front of the house.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, any other questions from board members? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 25 Claudia Lane? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recousels? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two, Richard and Jessica Gerbeth, Jr., 10 Oakwood Drive. Okay, good evening. If you'd just state your name.
Richard Robert Gerbeth, Jr.
So do you swear or affirm that the testimony provided tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I swear.
Okay, so what brings you here tonight?
I am medically retired from the Army. Since I was wounded in battle, I am a stay-at-home father, and it's been a dream of mine to put in a pool for my children.
Okay, and it's going to be located in your backyard?
Yes, sir.
And inside the fence that currently surrounds it?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Paul?
This is an above-ground pool?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Art?
No questions. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, um, okay, I think I just want to note for the record that your house is a corner lot.
Yes.
So that technically you have two front yards, okay?
Yes.
And so there really are only two choices to put it, either where you propose or on the, let's see, what would be the west side? But I think there are large trees there, right?
Correct, so it's, it would cost me a fortune to cut all those trees down, yes.
Please don't. Trees are good.
I like trees.
Okay, Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Not, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the application at 10 Oakwood Drive? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recousels? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Item three, Brian and Laura Fulmer, 40 Homer Place. Okay, just state your name, please.
Brian Fulmer.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony provided tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, and what are you proposing to do?
I'm proposing to build a deck connecting my house to my pool, an above-ground pool.
Okay, and it's an existing pool?
It is.
Okay, and so there's also a variance because you're...
Two inches.
I think two inches?
Yeah.
Two inches short, okay, all right. So we really have two issues to deal with here. Okay, Christine?
No questions.
Paul?
The pool is below ground level, or the bottom of the pool is below ground level?
At the closer parts of the house, that's correct.
Okay, and so the deck, where's the deck coming from relation to the house?
I got plans. Would you like to see them?
Want to bring those up?
I have copies of them.
But you can start over there.
That's okay, go ahead.
And my understanding is about ground, the deck is going to be at ground level from the house coming out to the pool?
No, at the existing door on the side.
Okay.
It's going to come out that way.
Okay.
And it's going to step down to the ground, like it has. Then the deck that I'm proposing to build, it'll have a gate there and then step down into the deck, which will be at pool level.
Okay, can we keep this?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
I have no questions.
Okay. The drawing that you submitted with the original, you know, kind of a rough, but it looks like the deck is kind of a U-shaped. It wraps around about half the pool?
That's correct.
Okay, and the deck will be at the same level as the pool, and then what stairs to bring it up to the door?
Yeah, basically, to the door platform, basically.
Okay. Okay, I get, yeah, 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 now I get it, okay. Okay, so Art?
I have no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
I have no questions.
And part of the reason for the going out is because of code, they had to dig and excavate outside of the pool, so there's a pretty decent slope that I'm trying to kind of cover up so you don't see it and the kids can't fall down.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. Larry, any questions?
Excuse me, no questions.
Okay, Tony?
I have no questions.
Carmen?
No, no questions.
Okay, is there any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address 40 Homer Place? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, items four and five have both been submitted by Mary Krieger, 3 Anthony Drive. Okay, good evening.
My name's Mary Krieger.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony provided tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so tell us just a little bit about what you're planning to do.
So I'm planning to operate a spa, a boutique home spa from my house, and I was looking to have the special use of selling retail products for my home, skincare. You need to continue it outside of the house, so I need to be able to sell my clients' product from the line that I'm using.
Okay, okay, for the purposes of this public hearing, let's discuss both items four and five together, and when it comes to the deliberation, in conversation with our legal advisor, we'll probably look at the interpretation first, then do the special use permit, so you know kind of the order of things here. Okay, let's see, Christine?
So when somebody comes in, appointment, that's when you would be selling?
Yeah, I would only sell to my clients at the time of the appointment. Nobody can like just come to my house and knock on the door and ask for a moisturizer. It won't be like that. It would be generally in the beauty industry, when you go for any appointment, you know, you have your service, and then after, usually, your esthetician will recommend products for you to use at home, so it would just kind of be the same format. So I would just, at the time of the service, recommend products for them to use.
Thank you.
Do you have an idea, scope of deliveries? You just get them through the mail or the UPS?
The product line I'm looking to use right now, they deliver through the U.S. Postal Service, so in terms of like the frequency of delivery, it would depend on the volume that I sell. This is a part-time thing, and this is not my full-time job, so I would, it's very, it's a very small side business that I'm doing, so I wouldn't see ordering more than four times a year. So it, like I said, it comes with my regular mail that comes every day anyway.
All right, and do you have an idea, the number of clients you would see in a week?
Right now, I believe my hours, again, are only on the weekends, and because the zoning law only allows until 7:00, I can only see one client at night during Monday through Friday, so I would say at the max, no more than 10 to 15 clients a week.
And how long is a session?
It depends on the service that they're getting. Not all services are the same.
Could you give me a hint?
So a standard facial would be an hour, however, an eyebrow wax would be 10 minutes.
Okay, all right, thanks very much. Art?
Are you going to have the client space that you don't, you know, far enough out, apart, that you don't have to worry about parking?
Um...
You're not going to have an influx of cars?
No.
You're not going to have them all there for...
No, I can only see one client at a time anyway because I'm the one performing the service, so it would just be one client at a time, and I do have a scheduled 15-minute turnover time window in between each client, so that's sufficient time for a client to pay and leave and then another one to come. However, I do have four spots in my driveway for people to park.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are you going to have any employees or assistants?
Nope.
Part of this, just you?
Just me.
Just you, okay. And the other thing that I wanted to get some clarification on is you made reference to your clients being able to order these, order things online.
Yeah.
How would that work?
So, you know, just to not force people to come in to pay for an appointment to see me or to just come up to my house if they run out of a product, they'll have the ability to just purchase it online and then I can just mail it to them, or, you know, let's say they're out of town and they need something, or, you know, it's just, it's just a more convenient way for them to continue their home care regimen without having to come and see me and pay for an appointment.
Okay, but then you would put it in a box and...
Oh, yeah.
Mail it.
Yep.
Okay, okay. So potentially, that would mean, that would mean there'd be a few more deliveries to your house?
I mean, it could potentially, but products should last clients from, you know, three to six months, depending on their use, so, and like I said, it's a very small side business. I'm not going to have a huge clientele list.
Okay, and we're talking about what, small bottles of things?
Yeah, just like the size of a, you know, facial soap, or they're usually no more than eight ounces.
Okay.
So it's very small.
All right, Larry?
No questions.
Okay, Tony?
I have no questions.
Okay, Carmen?
Yes, and you have no plans to have employees or someone else?
No, just me.
You currently don't, but, okay.
No, yeah, it's just me out of my house. It's, like I said, it's just a side business, so it's not my full-time job.
Right now, do your clients order online or do they buy from you?
Right now, I currently don't have any clients.
You what?
I haven't started this business yet. I'm just in the process of starting it, so...
I have two questions, please. Do you, are any New York State licenses required for what you're doing?
Yeah, so I have to have a New York State aesthetics license, which I currently have. I've been a New York State licensed esthetician for the past eight years. And then I also need a New York State appearance enhancement business license, which it's kind of like I'm waiting for this to see if I move on to that, however, that's just like a one-day application. They send it to you that day, once you fill it out online.
And are you a tenant of the property?
I live at the property. I don't pay rent, but I live there, yes.
Okay.
Okay, all right, any other questions from the board? Okay, if not, is there anyone that wishes to address the two applications at 3 Anthony Drive? Seeing none, a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recousels? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number six, the Ready Coffee LLC at 1810 South Road. They're coming, okay. Okay, we're in here now. Yeah, you can, somebody can use that portable, and if you're going to be pointing out things, use the portable mic right there. And I think, would you turn it on and let's just make sure it works?
Put my glasses on. Hello?
Yep, there it goes, okay. So if each of you would identify yourselves...
Good evening, my name is Anthony Morando. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Cuddy &amp; Fader, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Ready Coffee.
Hi, Jed Bonham, Ready Coffee, the applicant.
Scott Blakely with Insight Engineering.
Okay, do each of you swear or affirm the testimony provided tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
I do.
Okay, so I guess we'll start out, if you want to just tell us a little bit about what you're proposing.
Absolutely, thank you so much, and sorry you had to find us in the hallway. We didn't realize how quickly you were moving. This is a pretty interesting project, in our view, as the applicant. It's to install what we like to think of as an innovative drive-through kiosk that would be serving primarily coffee and some associated items. It's being proposed in a largely unused portion of the Route 9 Mall, which most of you are, I'm sure, familiar with and have visited. As you probably saw in our materials, it's in that area in the front, about 60, 50, technically 58 feet back from the front, where, right near the main entrance. And it's been pretty much underutilized as a parking lot for quite some time. We provided an image of that just to give you a perspective of where we were looking. The proposed kiosk is approximately 500 square feet, so it's pretty small, and it has the associated parking and the area for the drive-through queue. The kiosk is actually located in a place that is set back further from some of the existing structures on the site. There's the bank ATM kiosk there and some of the buildings on the outer sides of the larger parcel. In a moment, the applicant's going to walk you through just their operations for a quick second, just to get a feel for what the project actually is. They're pretty excited about it, and they get me pretty excited about it. And then Scott, Scott Blakely, will walk through the plan and talk to you and show you the setback distances, just to give you some perspective on the plan. As you mentioned in the agenda, we're seeking three variances, which are somewhat technical in nature, but they are to allow the front yard of 58 feet, where the 100 feet is required, but again, where there's, where it'll be set back further than some of the existing buildings and structures on the site. It's to allow 27-foot side yard where 100 feet is required, but technically, there's, it's measured to an internal lot line of an otherwise much larger parcel, so, again, a little bit technical in nature. And then the third is to allow three wall signs, and what's really important to keep in mind here is they're proposing three wall signs on this relatively small structure for purposes of providing visibility of it in its unique location and its unique size. And they're not trying to be gluttons for square footage on this. They've tried really hard to keep the signs as small as possible. They're allowed one sign on the front, that's a total of 100 square feet. What they've done here is proposed three much smaller ones for a total of, what we said in our application, 79 square feet. We actually spoke to the applicant, and they're actually proposing to reduce that another eight square feet. Their plan that they'll show you actually is down to 71 total square feet amongst those three signs, so really trying to stay in line with the code, not trying to go and ask for too much. The supportive arguments for each of the variances were laid out in our materials, so I won't, I won't go through all that. I'm sure, I'm sure you'll appreciate that. But just to highlight a few of the benefits of this project, and particularly this location, they're proposing, again, to adaptively reuse a spot that is just not being, is not being utilized to its fullest extent right now. It's currently asphalt. We believe there's significant aesthetic benefits and other benefits to the community from this, and a reduction, a reduction in impervious surfaces. The traffic and parking has been looked at by multiple consultants at this point, and of course, the planning board as well, and have found it to be satisfactory. And I think what's important when we're talking about the variances, particularly the sign variances, is the benefit to the applicant is great here, and there really isn't a negative or a downside to it from a visibility standpoint. This site has had variances in the past for multiple signs. Again, it's a commercial shopping center, and this particular location, it's not near anything else, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be interfering with any other uses. And I think when we're talking about the setback variances, which Scott will talk about in a second, the proposed location is very important to maintain proper circulation within the site and entering into and out of the site. It's positioned in a way that will avoid any internal conflicts, as Scott will show you, from when you enter the main site, and then as you start to turn, there's that entrance to get to the right, this area we're talking. It's important to stay out of that lane of traffic, and Scott will walk you through that. So we do believe that we've met the criteria, and we think it's a really great project, so Jed can probably explain that a little bit better.
Does that microphone? Is that on?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. This is just to give you a little bit of feel for our business and what we're proposing. Better days start with better coffee. I think we can all agree that that's true. And maybe some of us shouldn't start our days without the right amount of coffee, I being one of them. A very quick overview of our business. We are a craft coffee company focused on drive-through service, so this is really a way of bringing very high-quality craft coffee to a very convenient format. Typically, to get high-quality coffee, craft coffee, you might have to drive into the center of town to a place that's near a bookstore, find parking. This really makes it very convenient for people. All of our drinks are made with hand-pulled espresso, so this is, in our opinion, the real thing. We are also vertically integrated in that we batch roast our own coffee here in the Hudson River Valley, in a site that's just south of Poughkeepsie, so this is... um, in a site that's just south of Poughkeepsie. So this is, this is our home, and I'll talk about it, um, in one of the later slides, but we, as we grow, and this is a concept, we are hoping to grow, Dutchess County will remain our headquarters, and we will continue to roast and be based out of Dutchess County. This image is an accurate, um, rendering of the proposed structure. And some of the features I'll point out is that they're very, sorry
Sorry.
for the orientation. They're very large windows on the front. The idea is openness and transparency. We, we want people to see what we're doing. We're proud of what we're doing. And you can see from the scale of the, the person inside, that the windows are large. You can see people making these drinks, and it just creates a nice, light openness. And finally, something I had mentioned earlier. This is our home, so we are making our home here in Dutchess County. We're bringing employment to the area, and as we grow, we will continue to, um, supply, be based here, uh, in the, in the local area.
And we also, we only thought that was important just because of the, uh, one, the aesthetic benefit of it, but also the, the use is really uniquely, uh, well-fit for that area, we think. So Scott, will you show you the site plan really quickly?
Okay. And I will walk you through relatively quickly. Um, as Anthony mentioned, um, Route Nine is to the bottom of the page. This is the center access drive, um, into the shopping center. So the building is located here, fifty-eight feet from the front property line. That internal lot line that Anthony was referring to is this dash line here. And our setback from that internal line to our, um, enclosure for our recyclables and, and trash is located in this location. The important thing with any drive-through is, is the ability to, um, provide proper circulation and queuing um, for the, for the vehicles that'll be utilizing, um, the facility. Uh, we worked very closely with our traffic engineers, um, and developed a plan, um, based on, uh, the existing, uh, traffic anticipated entering, uh, from the two locations. We have provided stacking, starting at the drive-through window on this side, and then around the back of the building, to this location to the south. The reason for the location of the building, um, is based on a circulation pattern into the site that secondary access across the site, north-south, is located here. And we were, originally, we were, we had contemplated access through here, but that didn't allow us to get the proper stacking, um, that we needed, and we had met with the, uh, planning staff and discussed a number of, of options. And they agreed that the location of the building here, along with this stacking, and the main access into this area, uh, would be through this, through here. Um, within this area here, uh, we can stack a total of seven cars. Um, we have the ability for some additional cars in this portion of the site here. This is a one-way around the building, um, and you'd exit this way or exit through here. Again, that front setback is here. There is, um, existing landscaping along the frontage, uh, of Route Nine. These landscaped islands were actually added, um, a number of years ago, um, to that frontage.
Okay. Um, I don't remember, are both, um, both entrances to the, um, shopping center as a whole signalized? There are traffic signals at both of those?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And there, there is actually a third egress only, um, to the north by the tire shop?
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah, by the firestone.
All right, okay. Okay, before we, we go to the questions, um, as, as you, as you may know, um, we're required to, um, send applications to the county, um, it's, in, in, in this case, because it's, it's near a, a major highway. Um, and the county has responded, and I want to read this into the record and then give you an opportunity to, to comment. Okay, to zoning board of appeals, Town of Poughkeepsie, referral, uh, Ready Coffee, uh, variances. The Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development has reviewed the submitted referral for countywide and intermunicipal impacts as outlined in general municipal law. Action. The applicant is seeking the following variances related to the construction of a drive-through coffee business. One, front yard distance of fifty-eight feet where a hundred feet is required. Two, side yard, side yard distance of twenty-seven feet where one hundred feet is required. And three, total number of wall signs per business is three, where no more than one sign is permitted. Comments. The applicant has proposed wall signs on the north, south, and west facades of the building. Our department discourages multiple signs that can be seen from the same point of view. These duplicative signs are both unnecessary and contribute to visual clutter. As the building's main sign facing Route Nine will be visible to those traveling both northbound and southbound along Route Nine, the north and south-facing signs are unnecessary. Similar to many other stores within this plaza that maintain only one wall sign, the freestanding sign at the plaza's main entrance lists many tenants. We encourage the applicant to investigate whether a tenant panel could be accommodated on the plaza's freestanding sign. Recommendation. For the reasons stated above, we recommend that the board deny the request for the wall signs on the north and south facades of the building. Voting and reporting requirements. If the board acts contrary to our recommendation, the law requires that it do so by a majority plus one of the full membership of the board, and that it notify us of the reasons for its decision. Signed Owen Rafter, Commissioner of Planning, um, by Janet Tissier, uh, Junior Planner. Okay, so, um, wh- what this means is that if, in, in order to approve this, uh, we need a total of five votes, um, majority plus one. So, um, would you like to comment on the counties?
Absolutely, yeah, we got that today, so thank you for giving us a chance to comment on it. Uh, the, one thing of note is the letter doesn't refer to the setback variances in, in their comment section, so they're really focused on the, the sign variances, which I've done enough work in Town of Poughkeepsie now to see that when the county gets a sign application, they typically have some opinion on it. So, um, I, I will say, though, um, one point, I, I think they might have overextended on the authority here. This isn't, this isn't a county-wide or intermunicipal impact of these little signs, but, but putting that aside, we, we do think, uh, that, that the signs make a lot of sense, and, and it's not just, um, it's not just because of the Route Nine visibility, but you have to consider this. When you're driving into the site, there's also, again, that access route that comes in. I mean, this is a big shopping center, so part of, part of the traffic that needs to see this is also that internal, that internal driveway, uh, so there's a sign on that side, but that's not only, that's not the only reason for that. There's also, um, an issue with visibility in our particular location. Um, if you can think about that, that ATM kiosk, for example, which is, um, a few feet in front of, in front of this, uh, this structure, you, when you're driving north or south on, you can't see the front. You, you, you don't know what that is. There's colors and there's some identification on there so that you can see what that is. Um, I did actually bring a photo of that, so I could show it to you if you, if you'd like to see it. But I think the point is, is that when you're traveling north and south in this particular area, particularly given some of the vegetation on the front, um, there's very limited visibility in this area to be able to see what that, what that kiosk actually is doing. Uh, so we think it's really important, um, and, uh, again, I come back to that fact that, um, they've tried very hard to stay well below what the maximum square foot area would be for this, uh, to not push it by any stretch, and to really just give them their best chance to be successful in this location.
Okay, thank you. Um, Christine, questions? Paul?
What do you anticipate your hours of operation? We are proposing five AM to ten PM. Okay, that's all I have.
Art?
The lining up of cars or the staging areas, are you gonna have a pre-order window, like, for example, with hamburger places, McDonald's, like that? So you won't order till you get to the window?
You order at the window.
At the window?
Yeah, and it's actually, and I, I don't wanna, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but Jed will get deep into how excited he is about how quickly they will provide service at the window.
Yeah, the, the cycle times to serve each vehicle are roughly half of that.
I'm not laughing at you. It's his granddaughter.
Can we hire her on the spot? She, she has the job.
I'm sorry.
That's great.
The cycle times are roughly half of that for what you'd see at a Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay.
Part of that you'll have, we invite you to come and see once, when and if we're up and running, to come and see that system, but it, it, uh, the cycle times are very fast. And it, we, we don't need the order box in the large illuminated ordering station that you see more and more forty feet back from, from the order window. Ordering happens at the window, much in the same way that you'd order ice cream in the nineteen fifties or sixties. You do it there with an actual person.
Let's be careful there.
One, that one would see in the fort, in the nineteen fifties or sixties.
For older people, they'd remember that, right? Our signs, and I always like to remind people this, our sign code, I believe, mean, is that the signs are shut down after business hours. Are you willing to adhere to that at this point?
I,
Yeah, yeah.
I, I believe so. I don't know what the norm is in the center. Maybe they are all shut down, or?
Well, they're supposed to be.
We will, we will conform to whatever the regulations and norms are.
So you're saying after midnight, you'd be willing to lock in the?
Yeah, I mean, I-
I think so. It's something we haven't discussed, but if that is the rule, or if that is the norm.
I think that's, I believe, it's, it's after business hours.
I don't know if the landlord would require us otherwise. It's not something we've looked at or addressed, but we will. And I,
Yeah.
if that is the norm and the rule, that is something we would very happily do.
Yeah, we'll certainly comply with the regulations of the town, and then I, I don't recall if that's an actual regulation or not, but, if it's an ask of the board, I mean, you could see the applicant certainly. Happy to discuss it.
And these are all illuminated signs, correct, internally or externally?
In, internally.
They are illuminated, correct?
Yes.
Sometimes they aren't anymore, okay. I'm good, thank you.
Okay, uh, Larry?
Is this the fir-, are there other of these places, or is this the first one?
We have two locations under development. This is one of the two. So they're, neither of the two are operating currently. They're both under development.
So the signage is then intended to be part of the company policy to have those signs on three sides?
We have no specific policy related to the signage.
I think it's based on the location.
Yeah, specific location.
If you're in, if you're in a place where visibility wouldn't be as obstructed, I, I don't think it's a mandate that, by the company, that there'd be multiple.
Yeah, and I, you know, Anthony mentioned it briefly. There is a large Kohl's shopping center behind us, and I think it's fair to say that a fair number of our customers will come in and shop at the Kohl's, and on their way out, maybe they'll have a twenty-minute drive home, and coffee would be something they'd wanna have with them on that drive home, and to be able to see us, that's, that was really our goal.
Jim, I have one more, can I?
Oh.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I want to go with maps. So you said there's room for seven cars. So when the eighth car comes up, is there not gonna be room to have to pass by, or is it gonna end up in one of the traffic lanes?
Well, as I, as I mentioned, there's, there's room for seven cars from, from the order window back to this location. If, if, uh, an eighth car or even a ninth car were to pull up, they would, they would stay out of this traffic aisle, and they would be located right here. Um, our traffic numbers, um, were submitted to the planning board. Um, the, the queuing numbers, uh, the anticipated, uh, maximum queue, um, was reviewed by the town's, uh, traffic consultant, John Meyer Consulting, um, and, uh, they agreed with the findings. Um, you know, and again, a- as Jed mentioned, the, the, the wait time, or the queue time, is much less than you would see at, at a Dunkin' Donuts where you may have prepared food, or at a Starbucks where they would have prepared food. It's the, it's the preparation of the food that causes that backup. Um, and this is really coffee and, and ready-to-go, um, items.
So there are no, none of these operations currently in operation, correct?
We don't have any of these under operation.
So any, the, the time involved to make the product is just done by, how is that, how is that established, since you don't have other stores that you can say that takes them X amount of time?
So the, the concept we're presenting here is a popular format on the West Coast. So there are probably four or five hundred of these on the West Coast, and so the model has been beaten up. It's a very well-known model, very well-documented model, and those cycle times, our traffic engineer is not with us here, but in their report, they noted that we supplied them cycle time data, an enormous amount of cycle time data from the large West Coast purveyor. And the, the numbers were very clearly, um, sort, as we're, as we're representing them. So this is our first location. However, we're using a model which is, uh, is, is a widely-used model.
And I think it was actually pretty conservative in their reports because, because of that fact, they utilize, you know, Starbucks and some other, or use them as some, for some comparative data, and I think that's where both consultants came down on.
Yeah, some, some of those numbers are in, are in your, your-
Yeah, and sort of the logic thing to think about is, we don't prepare food, we don't assemble food, we don't warm food, we don't prepare food. That's really the sand in the gears of a Starbucks or a, or a Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Tony?
Will there be any in-store seating, or is it strictly drive-through?
No, strictly. There's no indoor/outdoor seating. You may have noticed even in, um, um, your zoning administrator's memo, it had a comment about seating. There, there is no outdoor seating proposed either.
Thank you.
Sure.
Carmen?
You know, I, I would find it helpful if, if you could show us, uh, show us some pictures of the three small signs, north, south, and west, and, and the one large sign, and, um, because that's, certainly is a, a sticking point with, with the county.
We have the architectural A two, which has signage on elevations, but we also have renderings.
It is exhibit E of your, um, of your packet, but we have it here too, to make it, to make it easier. And again, I think I, I should point out that, um, Ready Coffee actually went back, and since we filed, reduced it the amount of square footage to, uh, by eight square feet, down to seventy-one.
Armin, let me angle this towards you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I, I could do it, I.
Yeah, those renderings are, are right.
Anthony, do you have a D L of the new sign as reduced?
Yeah, that's on the board.
That's what that is, okay.
Yeah, we may, wanted to make sure it was available for public viewing.
Can you submit a copy to the, so we have it for the file, okay?
Yeah, we have fourteen copies to give.
Oh, okay.
You, you guys, you think it's updated architecturally to?
The side yard setback is from the garbage enclosure on, and then to the right side? Thank you. Right, and can you, where's the property line on the left side of the structure?
Property line on this.
Very far.
Very far, okay.
Yeah, I forget, it's, it's, is it a thousand? No, huh, several hundred feet, I think.
I'm not sure what that dimension is, but that,
No, not that.
southern property line is right here. Our building is right here, and then, so that other sideline is-
Is that distant line, okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the board? Art?
On the east side of the building, that's gonna be facing Kohl's, the- On the east side of the building, that's going to be facing Kohl's, the park, the buildings themselves, you have no indication of what you are, you're relying on the east and west?
We're relying on the, the, the south side.
I mean, the south and north sides. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Should we have asked for four?
Nope, nope.
Just kidding.
And there, there are places so that people could park and then walk to a, to a pedestrian window? Okay, and that's-
That pedestrian window is on the south side, near the front.
Okay, okay. Do you anticipate much in terms of foot traffic?
So, again, there are many of these on the West Coast, people, the, how people use them is, is very well-known. There are people who prefer to park and come to the walk-up window for a variety of reasons. Someone might be on a long trip and just want to stretch their legs.
Okay.
There might be a line of five cars, so a person might think, hey, I can park and go up to the walk-up window, it's a way of speeding things along. So there are reasons people use the walk-up window, and it's, is it a quarter of the transactions? No, but it might be 10%, 15%.
And then, these, these folks would go back to their car, so there's no seating out there? Yeah.
No, there's no proposed outdoor seating, yeah.
Okay.
How many employees will be in there at one time, typically? How many folks serving?
Between two and six.
Okay. Okay. All right, any other, yes.
Another question, it, it will be different kinds of coffee, like cappuccino and, and that sort of thing?
Correct.
But, but no, no pastries, no donuts?
So the, the food items, there will be some food items, they will not be on the menu, so if you look at our menu, there's no food section. However, there will be grab-and-go items that will be available, so muffin tops, you know, just the top of the muffin. There will be a variety of grab-and-go items like that.
Right. So you, you go to the drive-up window and place your order?
Mm-hmm.
Do you get your order there, or do you?
Yes, really fast.
It's really fast?
Usually, in about 35 to 45 seconds.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
Get your cappuccino in a high-pressure hose.
That's right.
They don't give it to a cup, it's just a hose that comes around.
The food numbers for similar, a similar concept out West, food is only 2 and 1/2 or 3% of transactions.
Oh, okay.
It's a, if you don't put it on the menu, it becomes a small item.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else? Okay, is there anyone from the audience that wishes to address the Ready Coffee application? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay. That brings us to the end of the public hearings. Do we want to continue, or, okay, so we'll now move into the deliberation phase, and, let's see, so, item number one, application, Lauren and Matthew Courts, 25 Claudia Lane, variance to allow a shed of more than 100 square feet to be located 2 feet from the side lot line where 10 feet is required. This is a type 2 action, so we don't have to do any environmental determinations. And, okay, on the, on the application, any comments, discussion? Anybody have a problem with this?
He's actually farther away from the side lot line than the fence actually is, so, and the fact that he's taking out some of the fill lowers the height of the, and the impact on the neighbor.
It will be as obvious.
Yeah. And-
And I, I think his testimony about not being able to have a poured concrete in the backyard with leach field is, kind of necessitates the placement here.
Yeah. I, I just wanted to check, I believe that he has to make sure that the front of the shed is either even with the front of the house, or like back.
I asked him that, and he said it would be behind, or in, in line with the front of the house, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, all right, Christine, you want to make the motion on this one?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number one. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as-
As, actually, we have, we have-
Done that, okay.
We have not, okay, the findings as follows, okay. A, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties, the board finds that the addition of a shed will be consistent with many of the other properties in the neighborhood, which also have, have sheds or other auxiliary buildings. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method other than a variance, the board finds that given the configuration of the lot and the fact that the rear yard is, is used for the septic system, that there are really no other locations except along the side of the house where the applicant could locate a shed. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically, it, it is substantial, but the, the shed will actually be further away from the property line than the existing fence, which will be taken down, which serves to mitigate the impact. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions, the board finds that there will be no adverse impact on the local environment. And five, whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, it's self-created in the sense that he's choosing to locate a shed in that location, it's not self-created in the sense that it's the only location that's really feasible for the shed, and the board also notes that in putting in this shed, he's going to change the topography of the lot and remove some temporary sheds so that the, the impact of this shed will be considerably decreased.
So move.
Okay, all right.
Second.
Then, a motion made, second?
Yeah. Do we need to make conditions that, how he described it, the removal of the top soil and the removal of those temporary structures are conditioned upon this?
We could, if you think that's-
Well, I don't know whether, I mean, that's what his testimony was, so I would just like it conditioned on those things.
We certainly can add that as a condition, you want to phrase it?
That the granting of the variance is conditioned on a applicant's testimony that he's going to remove the fill from the, from the front of the, or from the area where he's going to place the shed, and also the removal of the other structures.
Okay, so-
Second.
Is everybody okay with adding that as a condition?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so, there's a, a motion with a condition's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, approved. All right. Item number two, Richard Gerbuth Jr., the variance to allow the installation of-
I don't know if I received some kind of paperwork.
Yeah, yeah, everybody, you can, you can simply call the zoning office.
Okay.
And they prepare and make sure that the proper documents are signed, and that the zoning administrator and the building, building department-
Perfect, thank you so much.
Yeah, sure. Okay, okay, this is the application to 10 Oakwood Drive, this be a variance to allow the installation of a pool 7 feet from the side lot line where 15 feet is required. Again, this is a type 2 action, and, comments?
Yeah, I think, first of all, it's surrounded by a fence, there's not going to be really any impact, and there doesn't have any other place to put it.
Okay, all right, so, based on our discussion, I propose the findings as follows, the board finds that there will be no undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood, pools are, are quite common, the board also notes the pool will be surrounded by a 6-foot fence, which will, will make it virtually invisible to, to anyone on the street. The board finds that it would be extremely difficult for the applicant to place the pool in any other location, given the fact that it's a corner lot, so that the front yards, the two front yards are not available, and the only remaining side yard is heavily wooded. So the, the, and applicant has really no, no, no choice. The, an area variance is a matter of 7 feet where 15 feet is required, the board also notes that the fact that it's surrounded by a fence means that the, the exact distance from the pool to the property line doesn't make that much difference. The board finds that there will be no adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, and finally, the board notes that the difficulty is, is self-created in the sense that the applicant wishes to install a pool, but it's not self-created in the sense that his choice of locations for this pool are very, very limited. Okay, so with those as findings, Paul, do you want to do the, the motion on this?
Sure, I move that the board accept the request for an area variance set forth in item number two, decision's based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and approving this variance, board adopts the findings set forth by the chair.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve item number two made and seconded, there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, approved. Enjoy the pool. Item number three, Brian and Laura Fulmer, 40 Homer Place, we, we have two variances here, one is to, a variance to allow the location of an existing pool to be 14 feet, 10 inches from the side lot line where 15 feet is required, and two, to a variance to allow the construction of a deck attached to the house to be located 10 feet from the side lot line where 20 feet is required. Again, this is a, a type 2 action, so there's no environmental action we need to take. Comments? Discussion?
I think that the topography of the site, as it goes down there, kind of necessitates something to protect.
Yep, yep, and there's a, there's an open fence around it, but there's some, some vegetation that serves as some screening, so, I don't know, does anybody have any issues with this? Okay, all right, in that case, I, I oppose that the board adopt this findings as, as follows, the, the board finds that there will be no undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood, once again, this is a case where pools and, and decks are, are commonly found, and that there will be no detriment to nearby properties. The board also finds that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot really be achieved by any other method, the, the pool is existing, and the deck has to fit in between the, the house and the pool, so there's really no alternative except to seek a variance. The board finds that the, the variance for the location of the pool is entirely insubstantial, it amounts to simply 2 inches, and the board further finds that the variance for the deck is substantial in the sense that it's asking for 10 feet where 20 feet is required, but that given the location of the pool, the impact of this will be, be not substantial. The board finds that the proposed variance will not have any inverse, adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, and finally, the board finds that the difficulty is self-created in the sense that the applicant has, has built the pool where, where, where it is, and, and hence requires a, a variance, and similarly for the deck, but that the fact that it's self-created doesn't prohibit the granting of a variance. Okay, so with that as the findings, Art, do you want to-
Sure.
Do the honors here?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item three?
Three.
Thank you. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So moved.
Okay, is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Hold it.
Okay, good, good, thank you.
More or less.
Okay, so, the motion is approved, 7-0. Okay, this brings us to items four and five, as I, I mentioned before, item, item five is an interpretation-
She's very shy.
That we, we have to clarify before I think we go on to the special use permit, so, so item five, Mary Krieger, 3 Anthony Drive, is seeking an interpretation of the terms stock-in-trade and retail sales in chapter 210, article 74, sections A and B, that would prohibit the sale of products either in person or online to the customers of a proposed home occupation service business. Okay, this is a, a type 2 action, so we don't have an environmental determination, and I note, and you should have in your packets, a, a staff report, and before we, we go into that, I wanted to thank our new development director, Mike Welty, for time and expertise, and also the help of Lisa Cobb in, our attorney, in sorting through this. So, I don't know, did you want to just summarize the, your?
Sure, I think, again, the, the question is whether or not, in certain language in the zoning code, that prohibits stock-in-trade, which is undefined, and retail sales, is, would prohibit the type of, sort of ancillary sales that is being just talked about here. Clearly, the, you know, the applicant is not talking about establishing a store or a, that kind of a business, so, but, you know, so we're, we're looking at these as really ancillary to the service that's being provided in the home occupation. The, I think there's a distinction to be made, though, between the two different types of retail that are being proposed, one is in person, and I, I think everyone understood that very clearly to be, you know, someone comes in for their treatment, they're recommended a certain, you know, lotion of some kind or something like that, and, and they can purchase that to bring home and, and continue with that. The, the second part was this online sales, and we heard testimony tonight from the applicant explaining a little bit more about what- explaining a little bit more about what that means. And I think that's, you know, a distinction, though, that is still one that the ZBA can decide, you know, what it feels, how it feels about. So. Lisa, have you had any additional thoughts about that?
Not at this moment. If you need me to chime in as we go along, I will.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So, let's just take this in two parts. The notion of, and I think the phrase that Mike uses is correct, an ancillary sale. I mean, it's, first, you have to be client, and you have to be there, and, yes, you want to be able to take some of this home with you. Okay. I don't see that that's retail sales, in the sense of, you know, 7-Eleven, where, you know, anybody can just sort of walk in, buy something off the shelf. So, you know, my interpretation is that what's being proposed here does not constitute a retail sale. Is...
I think, as she's described it, certainly just incidental to her main activities for the business.
Yeah.
Or ancillary.
Yeah. Okay. And as far as the online sales are concerned, I don't see this as a retail sale either. And I'm a little concerned that, you know, well, let's face it, there are a lot of people that sell things out of their houses on eBay. And when the sale goes through, they put it in a box, seal it up, walk it to the post office, and mail it off. And we don't have a problem with that. So, again, I don't see that what's being proposed as an online sale is anything that is even remotely close to a retail sale. So...
Based upon the description that she gave and the testimony that she provided, I think that's accurate. And so long as it stays within those parameters, I think that's correct.
Right.
What's the board's interpretation of the stock and trade phrase?
I think the code is simply wrong in the way in which it uses the phrase stock and trade. I mean, it's not defined, I went and looked it up in the dictionary, because our code says that if the term is not defined in the code, then the standard English meaning prevails. Okay? So, when you look it up, stock and trade is defined as the equipment, merchandise, or materials necessary to or used in a trade or business, which is, to me, way too broad. I mean, what that would mean is if you were, you know, her stock and trade includes the chair in which the client sits, includes the things, the means of applying the things, and so on and so forth. I mean, you wouldn't be able to have a business of any kind if you prohibited stock and trade. And I think, and I think, Mike, you pointed this out, too, in your report, that we think the code, whoever drafted the code, used a term where they meant a stock of merchandise or something like that. So, that's the way I take it.
But if it's meant as a stock of merchandise, then the way I, one of the rules of statutory construction that you're supposed to undertake is that you, if there's an interpretation that provides some meaning to all ambiguous portions, you use that interpretation, as opposed to finding one, in essence, if you were to say that that's just improper wording, then you're saying that that section should be deleted and have no reference whatsoever.
I would like to see the town board clarify this.
One possible explanation for the distinction that I'll offer to the board, and the board can decide or not. There are two sections under the home occupation code. Section A is general criteria that are within all home occupations that are allowed. You're supposed to be in keeping with the residential nature of the area, et cetera. Then, when you get to subsection B, those are uses that are specifically prohibited. So, I think that what is clear is that retail sales as a standalone home occupation are clearly prohibited. But what was possibly meant to be prohibited, and it's what the board is sitting here to determine, is whether retail sales of an incidental nature or in conjunction with an action, an application like this. And I think if the board were so inclined, one line that you could draw is, the difference here is, these are not sales made to the general public, they're sales made only to clients who are coming in for the other purpose. So, for example, as was testified, she won't allow the public to come in and purchase the same lotion that she would sell to a client. And looking toward a more global view of this interpretation, if someone, for example, would open a nail salon, and then it would be the question of the sales of the nail polish. If you're selling to someone who's sitting there getting a manicure, that might be one version, whereas if you were selling to the general public, that's another. But I would encourage the board, if there is an interpretation that gives some semblance of meaning to that subsection eight, rather than ignoring it entirely, that would be a more preferable legal interpretation, but I leave that to the board.
We don't often deal with interpretations, so I'm not quite clear what the proper procedure here is.
The only thing that I would encourage the board is, whatever interpretation you give to this code section, it's not specifically, while it's intended for this particular application, it will have more global application were someone to come with a similar or slightly related or, you know, additional situation. So, the interpretation that the board makes here should be sufficiently broad and applicable to all similar situations.
Okay.
So, if we said something like stock and trade, we interpret stock and trade to be the sale of products, which is a significant portion of the retail or of the business?
It can be defined as a percentage of total revenue. It can be defined as sales to clients versus sales to the general public. There are a number of ways that the board could define the stock and trade, such that it would not run, this application would not run afoul of that definition. So, sales to clients.
Well...
For example, if you come, if someone comes in to buy a nail polish, to take it away slightly from this application, and they're not getting a manicure, then the sale of the nail polish would be 100% of the proceeds. Whereas if it's part of a service that's being provided, that would be the greater portion of the receipt at that time. But how the board would then...
Okay. So, let me put this sort of in the form of motion, and then we can adopt it. Okay. So, I move that the board finds that the interpretation of the prohibition of retail sales does not include the incidental sale of items that are part of or incidental to the service of the spa proposed by the applicant. And further, the board finds that the sale of these incidental and ancillary products, when they are part of the treatment and procedures of the, offered to a client as part of the spa home occupation, do not constitute the sale of stock and trade.
What if he made it more broad, just saying that the incidental sale of products to a permitted business is, does not offend it, or...
Okay. Yeah.
Rather than making it just to this particular application, because I think that's where you're going, right?
Yeah. Exactly. Sure. Sure. That makes sense. Does that...
I'm good with that.
That doesn't, that doesn't, okay, that gets me off my...
Do you also have to address, do you also have to address at the same time subsequent sales to clients for the online sale? That also would not, wouldn't we have to mention that as well? But that would be subsequent sale to those clients?
Let's see. So I...
Because we're not encouraging them, or not asking them to come back in, where that would be more like retail traffic.
Right.
And this is subsequent to the service provided, but continues to be an ancillary sale to that service.
So, you could say that...
It's not broader than that.
Subsequent sale to customers of the permitted online, of the permitted home occupation, whether in person or online, also do not fall within your, the prohibited stock and trade?
Yeah. So long as they're incidental, yeah, we don't really care about the method, right?
Right. Right. The only thing that I would be a little concerned about is, I mean, the applicant was very clear, they ordered online, she puts it in a box and mails it to them. I mean, and it seems to me, we might run into a problem down the line if people could order it online and then come and pick it up. I mean, you know...
Well, there are rules about the number of visits she can have, right? So if she exceeds that, then...
Is the important distinction here the idea that they're clients of her business? I mean, I think the real concern is that, you know, people really like this product, and they start coming and, you know, they find her website and they want to order it online, you know, she becomes a mini Amazon, you know, and very quickly, right? That's clearly not what we want to see happen, but, again, the tieback to the client of the service is maybe the key limitation on that online sale. Does that work?
But that, I mean, we can define when, as in the initial part of this interpretation that the board finds, we can define a client to be someone who has received a service at the location, and therefore, sales to clients would be permissible and not be prohibited by the stock and trade prohibition, whereas sales to the public would be prohibited.
That works for me.
It works for me.
Okay.
What is it meant by incidental? Means like, as long as it's connected to the service, or only 10 or 20% of the people are going to buy it?
I think, I think the way we've been using the word incidental here, it means that the primary reason for going to this business is to get some kind of treatment. Okay? And then, because of that treatment and the desire to continue it at home, or whatever, we have the product. So, buying the product is something that comes after and because of the main reason for the visit, the spa treatment. And, or, you know, ancillary, you know, it's a kind of an add-on to the main occupation here, which is the spa treatment. That's what I'm...
So, if she receives an order from someone who's not a client, you would expect her not to...
Not fulfill the order.
I think it's a little, it's a word, it doesn't seem very practical.
Um...
I mean, maybe a type business should word of mouth, so maybe she has a friend, the person's a friend of someone who goes there, so then, first of all, say, well, I'll send it to your friend, I mean, you know? If she's not going to be advertising, she's not going to be...
That's something that the board can address in the special use permit requirement. I don't, I mean, I'm not entirely sure how you would do that, that's been one of my questions going along, unless you have a client list of the business. But I think if you're, I mean, it would be something where, on a practical level, if you see a number of boxes being shipped, and only a few cars coming for business, it would be apparent to anyone paying attention, such as the zoning administrator, that excess sales were going on beyond what was permitted. So if the board put that as a condition, I think it would not be terribly difficult to monitor with some semblance of closeness to what was actually happening. But it's not short of requiring a customer list and, you know, or a renewal of the special use permit periodically. I don't know how the board would monitor whether sales were to third parties or to clients.
Okay. All right. Let's, I mean, are we agreed that, I guess, what I put in the form of a motion, and then we modified, in terms of the interpretation of what retail sales and stock and trade mean? And I think we're also clear on the fact that, in this particular application, what's being proposed does not violate the restrictions in the code.
Right.
So, I think we're sort of...
Yep.
Clear on that? Okay. So, I am going to hand the drafting of this to you. I think we're pretty clear based on the discussion, so I don't have any worries about voting on this. So, okay, let me move that then, in item number five, the board finds that the interpretations of the terms retail sales and stock and trade that have been drafted, the board interprets the terms in, as described in the previous findings. And, two, the board finds that the current applicant may, is allowed the incidental or ancillary sales, either at the time of the client visit, or subsequently through online sales to existing clients. So move.
Second.
Okay. All right. Okay. I think, for our vast TV audience, you know, both of you...
Which person would that be?
Yeah. Yeah. They've just gotten to see how sausage is really made, in terms of zoning decisions. Okay. All right. So, there's no other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. So that takes care of the interpretation. All right. Then, item number four. A special use permit to allow the operation of a home occupation, specifically a boutique home spa, with associated ancillary sales. This is an unlisted action, and the... This is an unlisted action and the applicant has submitted, and it's part of your packet, the EAF short form. Okay. And the, the parts two and three, the, the board completes and I think you can see there will, there will be little or no environmental impact. So I move that the ZBA declare itself lead agency for the purpose of evaluating the environmental impact of the action proposed at 3 Anthony Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I further move that the ZBA finds that based on the information submitted in the EAF short form, that the proposed action will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we also have a motion that there are no other involved or interested agencies and that the ZBA is the only agency that's required for this?
Okay.
Thanks.
As amended.
Yes, as, as amended, okay. Okay, and you will also find in your, your packet the staff report that goes through the criteria for a special use permit in considerable detail and finds that, well, let's see, you want to just...
Just, there's two sets of criteria, really. There's the general provisions, which are for that the, there shall not be any detrimental effect by the establishment of such use on other uses within the district, that such use will be in harmony with the orderly development of the district, and the location, nature, and height of the buildings, walls, fences, parking areas will not discourage appropriate development and use of adjacent lands, that all structures, equipment, and materials shall be reasonably accessible for fire and police protection, and that the use meets prescribed requirements for the district in which it is located, including minimum yard requirements for the district in which it is located, or as further specified in this section, and included, including maximum height required off-street parking in fine regulations. And so for each, we just went through basically, and, you know, noted that those would not, we would not be, have, have any of those impacts. There are also performance standards for special uses, and the ones that seem to apply particularly to this one would be the standards for noise, parking, and character and appearance. And we believe that those were all adequately addressed in the application. And then finally, there are specific criteria for home occupations in the zoning law that, that are not specifically listed elsewhere in that section, and the applicant appears to meet all of those specific criteria. And those are that there's no more than two non-resident employees, no more than 25% of the residential building's habitable space shall be devoted to the use, that services and instruction offered shall be limited to no more than five clients or customers at a time, and that parking for each employee shall be provided on-site, and in addition, if the business receives clients or customers on the premises, that sufficient off-street parking for each such client or customer shall be provided, and the registrations shall certify the number of off-street parking spaces on the property, and we note that there are four off-street parking spaces on the property, so...
Okay. Um, I think the, the last remaining thing we need to do is to decide, do we want to make any conditions here?
Right.
Regarding ancillary sales, or online sales, or have, have, have we...
I think you've covered it, haven't you? Pretty much established.
I personally like the condition that the online or ancillary sales be only to customers, clients of the business, as opposed to, to the general public.
I thought we did that.
We did that as part of the interpretation...
Yeah.
Which is a separate, but to, if someone were to look at this business, it should be included in the document that will be the special use permit.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, in that case, I...
Jim?
Yeah?
I, I just have one question.
Yeah.
When, when the client orders something online, is it delivered to the client's home, or?
According to the, the testimony, the, she will take the order, put it in a box, and mail it to the, to the client.
Okay.
So the client never comes back to the house?
Right. Okay, I, I just wanted to clarify. All right.
Yeah, which, you know, means that there's really no impact on the neighborhood at all.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I move to approve the request for a special use permit set forth in item number four. This decision is based on the review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the findings of the staff report, and that it meets the criteria set forth in the town code. The approval of this special use permit is subject to the following conditions. One, that the, the online sales of, online sales, um, wait, how did...
That in-person or online sales be made only to clients of the business.
That, that was the, that was the wording I was looking for. Okay. Okay, so that would be the condition, that sales are only to clients. Okay. So move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Okay.
Jim?
Yeah?
Only for this particular business, right? So if she didn't do well and decided to branch out to something else, she'd have to come back before us again, right?
Yes, the special use permit will be confined to the home occupation that's in the application, being a boutique spa.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right, good question, though. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, item number four is approved. Okay. All right. And item number six, Ready Coffee at 1810 South Road. This involves three variances. One, to allow the construction of a kiosk 58 feet from the front lot line where 100 feet is required. Two, the kiosk to be located 27 feet from a side lot line where 100 feet is required. And three, to allow three wall signs with a total area of 71 square feet where only one sign of 100 square feet is allowed. This is a type-two action, so we don't have any environmental issues to deal with. And once again, in your packet, you'll find a, a staff report. Okay, and also, I remind us that because of the county objection, our vote on the wall signs has to be a supermajority. So, so I think for purposes of just making things very clear, let's vote on the two other variances first. And so, I don't know, Larry, you want to make the motion and, and it...
Both or just one?
Yeah, it's, so, I, I think, talk about, on item six, parts one and two.
We're going to use the criteria that the applicant used?
Hmm.
For the area variance?
Well, in this, in the staff report, I did...
Okay.
Make reference to those and concur that they, they are...
Yeah, yeah, so for the, for the findings, it would be the findings submitted by the applicant in, what is it? It's the, it's actually in the, in the...
It's Exhibit C.
Is it Exhibit A, Exhibit A? Yeah.
Exhibit C, the analysis of the criteria?
Exhibit C, analysis of area variance criteria.
Yes, okay, right. And so we, and they answer each of the five questions, so we can just take that as the finding. Okay.
Okay, I move that the board, I'm sorry, so it's both one and, both parts one and two.
She's...
Right. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number six, parts one and two. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Well, or I think we can say, set forth in...
Say the staff report. I mean, it refers to the...
The, the staff report.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second.
Okay.
Did you put that your second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so any discussion on, on these two, which I think are fairly straightforward? Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, so now we're going to focus on the issue of the signs. The request is for three wall signs, a total area of 71 square feet, where the code allows only one wall sign, but it can be 100 square feet. Okay, and a type-two action, so we don't have to worry about the environmentals.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, discussion on this?
Yes. I, I, I looked at the, at the signs, you know, the one large sign and then, then the three smaller ones. I think, given the location of this kiosk, or whatever it is there, you, you really need the north and south, assign for north and south. And of course, west would be the, that's the one that you see from the road, but as you're traveling, I, I think you really do need it, and, and they're, they're small. They're not obtrusive signs.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I think I could support this.
Yeah, I, there are two things, and I just, I just got the county thing this afternoon, and my immediate reaction was, there's a trade-off. I mean, do we want three smaller signs, or do we want one big sign? And in the past, we've, we, we haven't liked big signs.
Ever have it?
We haven't. We don't, we don't, we don't like big signs. Okay. And particularly in the case of a small building, I mean, and, and, and they could put up this huge sign. The other thing, and I had kind of forgotten this from the field trip, so I, and so I actually went back on Google Maps and did the satellite view, that row of trees along the front of the plaza, right now, doesn't block the view very much, but when you take the summer view, there, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of vegetation there. And, and it's, it, it's, it's, it's not as obvious, it won't be as obvious in a month that you can see the building just the front side. Once, once those trees leaf out, it's, it's harder. And so I, I think, you know, that too suggests that the three signs have a function.
Again, they've cut it down significantly, you know, down to about 71 square feet.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a whole lot of signage compared to what we've allowed in other places.
Mm-hmm. That is true. That is true.
Good with it.
Um, any other comments? Okay. All right, so Tony, I guess it comes around to you.
All righty.
Okay.
And, oh, I should just say that in the staff report, the, the staff recommendations is that this be approved.
Okay.
Okay, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number six. This decision is based on a...
Let's just say part three.
Part three, I'm sorry. And this decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by the board members. In, in approving this variance, the board adopts the staff recommendations as submitted to the board, and that's it. So move.
Second.
Okay. Move to approve the three smaller wall signs has been made and seconded. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, approved. All right. The last item on our agenda is a request from the planning board that it serve as lead agency for a, a proposed action at Marist College. I, I have the material, and anybody that wants to look at it is welcome to. In, in a nutshell, Marist is proposing to put an addition on its athletic center, the McCann Recreation Center, I guess is the exact name. This is located in the far southwest of campus. Basically, it involves demolishing part of the existing center and building an addition that will almost double the size of the, of the recreation center. And inside could be locker room, let's see, well, the entire fitness center, okay. We are likely to see this coming to us because it's located very close to the property line. So it, it, they anticipate that they'll be coming to us for, for variances. But in terms of doing the environmental assessment, this is something, of course, that we've traditionally let the planning board do. They have the staff to do it. So if there's no problem, I move that the ZBA consents to the request from the planning board to serve as lead agency for the purpose of doing the environmental determination of the proposed McCann Center addition two.
Second, then.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, that brings us to the end of the agenda, and is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
So move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Adios.